All right, good evening, everyone. I'm very sorry for our delayed response tonight, but I want to welcome you all. We're going to go ahead and get started. I know our city manager is going to be walking in momentarily, but we'll go ahead and get started with calling this meeting to order. To start us off tonight, I'm going to ask you to join me in a moment of silence before we do the pledge of allegiance. Please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next we will have roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. And Commissioner Moody is not feeling well and so will not be joining us tonight, so can I get a motion to excuse him?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, so next, I'm going to walk us through the agenda just quickly in case this is the first time that you've been at one of our city commission meetings. So we have a couple opportunities for public comment, and the very first one, I'm going to open that up in just a moment, is public comment on something that we're actually voting on tonight. So earlier today, we had a number of what we call standing committee meetings where we met, we talked about a number of issues, we voted, and those are listed on your agenda. And then tonight, we'll be voting to affirm those decisions that we made this morning. Welcome. And so, the first opportunity for public comment will be specifically related to anything that we're voting on. Couple rules that we have in this space and time we have together particularly around public comment. So we ask you to come up to this podium. We'll give you three minutes to speak. We ask you to share your name, the city that you live in, and then for the first public comment period, we ask you to specifically point out what item you're referring to. And then our city clerk over on the table has a clipboard with a list, and if you would just write your name, and the reason for that is just to make sure that we get your name accurately in the minutes. And then later on, we don't have any, I don't believe we have any scheduled public hearings tonight. So then at the end of the meeting is another opportunity for public comment, and that is about anything that you want to talk to us about tonight. So it doesn't have to be anything related to the agenda, and that public comment period will be later on. So I'll open up the first opportunity for public comment, and again, this is on items that we're actually voting on tonight, so now's an opportunity to come forward. And again, I just ask you to share your name, the city that you live in, and the item you're speaking to. All right, opening that up. Oh, Mr. Miller, are you coming up? Oh, well, I recognize you, but you have to come up to speak at the podium if you want to speak about an item. How you doing?
Hi, Hoffman. And a very pleasant good evening, fellow veterans, citizens, and President Lanier. This is the House of the People. Watchdog Miller reporting. Welcome to Simon Legree Square where black routes 1, 2, 3, 4, 14 and 5 are banned and buried beneath faggot-run founders where, let's see, anyway, Joe Jones had a huge event right across the street. How many urban-type people actually admitted there when the buses routes, his 14, home 14?
Mr. Miller, what item are you speaking to?
I'm speaking to your travel authorization to Washington DC when you obstructed. Well, that would come under participation, that would be numbers, agenda 5, 13, 14. What kind of public participation? Who gets into these meetings, who don't? It's nice if you're wealthy enough to have a car, but you don't want to hear how many bus routes I had to take to get here tonight. On 8, 1, and 2, this city is already way overbounded. 9, a 4, the arena deal across the street. Hanley Hartwell bribed Obama's chief organizer here with a cushy convention job after she tipped him off last January, January that year, pushing 11 years now. We never heard from EGR Heidi since, and you know where our African-American bus routes are, veterans and so forth. 9B, 2, Marsh Ridge, you are assaulting those senior citizens by, you're going to cut down hundreds of trees in back of there just for your $75 million Laker lunacy bundle. Totally unnecessary. And it's a project would just be oozing red-hot asphalt, hundreds of trees down. And for lighting, I read $450 per light bulb, and already on record with a $25 prize for the citizen who comes up with the best light bulb joke. 25 bucks, what a guy, huh? Moving on, no dollar figures, 9B, 6, 7, C4, all bylaw changes should be published in this minute on Brownfield bylaws, what's been added and what's going to be deleted. No details on 5, C9, 600 grand looks way too high for what's mentioned there. Looks like a lot of lowballing bids in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, your time's up. Thanks. All right, anyone else who wish to be heard on items that we're voting on tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that public comment period, and that will take us to our approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was October 23rd. Can I get a motion? All right, commissioners, any comments, edits? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
We have a communication from Lorena Wenzel regarding their resignation from the Uptown Business Improvement Board.
That will be referred to our Committee on Appointments. And next that will take us to our reports of city officers.
From the Comptroller's Report for the period of October 17, 2018 through October 31, 2018, in the amount of $22,972,073 and 33 cents.
That is received and filed.
And Treasurer's Report for the period of October 13, 2018 through November 2, 2018.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items that we voted on earlier today in one of our standing meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight, with one voice vote, those items will be adopted. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Some move, support.
All right, anything to add or comments? We had a long morning today. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one item tonight.
Ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2018-35 for fiscal year 2019, Amendment Number 8.
Some moves, Bart?
Support. All right, Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor. This morning in fiscal, we had the vast majority of the items on the, for the budget ordinance were the receiving of grants. But there was one item in particular that I wanted to highlight, and that was the dollars that were appropriated for a pilot rental assistance center, something that we've talked about and have come to an agreement upon, and so we are setting aside dollars for that. That is what has affected the contingent balance. The good news is, is that those dollars will be replaced as these are dollars that will come from a different fund. So we do again have a slight change in our contingent balance.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yep.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. And commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Some move, support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, commissioners, we don't have any resolutions tonight or scheduled public hearings, so that will quickly take us to public comments. So this is your opportunity to come up and speak about anything that is on your heart or mind. Again, the same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. We ask that you write your name up here on the clipboard, and then also if you would speak into the microphone, that would be appreciated. And this public comment period is now open.
Hi, good evening. Matt Hoffman from Grand Rapids. So good evening, Honorable Mayor Bliss, Mr. Washington, and other county commissioners. I was here for the work session earlier today about the medical marijuana ordinance, and it's unfortunate that Commissioner Moody is not feeling well. He and I have had quite a few correspondences pertaining to the interest in local hiring in Grand Rapids. And I have to say that I was elated to see that your VITA had put such an emphasis on hiring within the city of Grand Rapids and Kent County. Conversations that I've had with Commissioner Moody, I explained that through my company, Handgrown Jobs, we have the ability, and we've already acted, to prioritize local hiring based on geographical locations. And so what I'd like to do is make a proposal, to make a presentation to this body during a work session where I can lay out specific steps that I'm taking as a private business owner to aid you. One of the things that we had discussed as a team and also with Commissioner Moody and Commissioner Womack is how do we verify that there isn't gamifying of the system? I had a great meeting with Mr. Alvin Hills, and some alarming things were brought to my attention through local businesses using diversity, sort of gamifying hiring minorities and then walking them out the back door to meet the requirement to be in good standing with the city. That's disturbing to me on a moral level because that's just not right, and that's not the way that we should do things, and it's upsetting to me as a business owner that someone would take advantage of my services that are well-intended. And that's something that with as much authority as I can have, that I would prevent. I think that this body has much greater experience in this, and I could use guidance in setting protocols in place and checks and balances to prevent that type of thing from happening. I want to thank you for having this conversation about cannabis and about the cannabis industry. You know, I've been here since the beginning with Safe and Secure GR, and I just want to continue to extend the olive branch and say that my organization and my colleagues are here to continue walking down this very new path. Commissioner Jones, you said earlier that, you said earlier that the new path is something that hasn't been done before, and I couldn't agree more. And leveraging the expertise and the experiences that you have with the expertise and experiences that we have ensures for the most successful venture into this thing, which is new and raw with challenges. So thank you for your time, and thank you for having such a brief meeting so we can all go home and get out of our clothes and have some dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jay Fleming. I am a cannabis consultant from Kalamazoo. I wanted to reemphasize my colleague Matt Hoffman's comments, thanking you all for your measured and very deliberative process in looking at the cannabis regulations. Us in the industry are very appreciative of your forward thinking. I'd also like to remind you, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about looking at this from the medical market perspective, but the historically cannabis businesses that have been unable to move forward into recreational markets as those markets open up tend to fail. So I wanted to make sure that you all take a measured approach and look at what you're doing, and make sure that the zoning that you approve can be workable for recreational because businesses that are stuck in that medical position three years down the line from now will be in a poor position. And I'd like to see, I'm sure you would all like to see the businesses that open in Grand Rapids to be successful. So again, I'd like to thank you for the conversation that you're having and your proactive approach to this, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi.
Good evening. My name is Mike Senia. I live in Kentwood. I am an employee of a small company that's based here out of Grand Rapids. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, the proposed changes with what's going on with the marijuana ordinances. In particular, you know, one concern that we have as a small company trying to get involved with the marijuana industry is that we want to keep the money here locally in Grand Rapids. As we all know, a lot of big companies, you know, from out of state, from Detroit, Kalamazoo, and et cetera, you know, they like to come in and cash in, but you know, we want to make sure that we can also participate and keep the money here. The Planning Commission, they decided not to support an amendment which basically require applicants just to provide that they applied to the state for prequalification. They are now pretty much going with, you know, you have to have that prequalification in order to apply to the city of Grand Rapids. I know it was a push for the past couple months to basically just let us show that we've applied, which was our intention. I called Layer this morning to kind of get a heads up on what their turnaround time is, and in a perfect world, as of today, they're working on applications that were processed in the first week of July. So for instance, you know, the city adopted this, I think it was July 24th, so if anybody locally here that wasn't in business somewhere else in the state, if they wanted to get involved in this, they really wouldn't even have been able to make your November 2nd application date if that was to still have happened. They never would have got their prequal. Now, the four months, that's a perfect world, and we all know that it's not going that way, so with the state of Michigan. So for any startup in Grand Rapids that hasn't been involved getting their prequal through the state, you know, they're not going to be able to, even if they applied today and you extend this out to March, the end of March, there's no way possible that anybody's going to be able to get their prequalification from the state. So by not allowing that proof of application versus the prequalification, that's basically going to guarantee that any local startup, Grand Rapids-based business, they're not going to survive in this industry. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. As you know, I've spoke before. I'm here to let people know what I've accomplished so far. At the last city commission meeting, I met with Asante Kane and gave him my information. He forwarded it to James Hurt, and James Hurt called me, and we set up an appointment for November 6th, which I attended in spite of the rain.
And remind me, your name's David, right?
Right.
That's right, that, okay. Thank you. And did you sign the form over there?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. See you.
And he forwarded it to this James Hurt, and we set up an appointment for November 6th. We discussed many, first of all, I told him all of my ideas, and they seemed to endorse them, and they added a number of comments to it. Mr. Hurt took a lot of notes since we've made plans to make another meeting after Thanksgiving, and that will be arranged. And that... Let's see. I laid out all my problems and ways to accomplish these goals to clean up the city of Grand Rapids. And I'd also like to endorse the fact that we should attempt to get the surrounding municipalities to join in with us on cleaning up because they have the same problem. And that... I went to the county building today, and they told me when their county commission would be meeting for the general things, and I would like to intend to consult with them and see what they think of the plan as well. I hope the Honorable Mayor and City Commission will see the value of this program and endorse it and see it as they see fit. I would like to use the existing organizations, whether they be business organizations or even some of the city different agencies that do things like the Neighborhood Association and different associations along the way to assist us in this program, which would keep the cost down, and it would help improve many areas, and I think it would be very beneficial to all of the people of the city of Grand Rapids to have a decent place to live.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Your time's up.
Okay.
Thanks, and I'm glad you were able to meet with staff. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hello, Mr. Townsend, how are you?
Yeah, not that good. My name is Johnny Townsend, and I'm down here basically to apologize and say that this probably would be my last time coming down here because at age 72, it's time for me to go somewhere and sit down and be quiet because I've got early signs of dementia, and sometime I speak when I should be quiet. And I definitely want to apologize for last week for making that comment about going out to pine rest. Probably need to go out there, but I didn't have to tell the public that. But anyway, and I also want to go somewhere and sit down because it's time for me to let somebody else do what I've been trying to do all my life. I see a lot of things that need to be done, and first, I want to apologize for making that comment about Robert S. because he got ran off of Eastern Street for letting me go on there complaining about a job that was discriminating against me. And I also want to say that it's time for me to let young people do that. I want to get all kinds of things done. If I see something wrong, I like to jump in there and try to do it because for 50 years, I came to Grand Rapids in 1967, and for 50 years, I called myself hiding in the bottle because I left some unfinished work in Mississippi because I got scared and ran away from something that I was doing down there. And I ran away basically to save my life, and I came here and hid in a bottle. I was an alcoholic for 50 years, but I was a functioning alcoholic because I always kept a job. I was able to function. And what I'm trying to say is that I'm in a 12-step program, and my sponsor said he thinks it's time for me to go sit down. I've engaged the city headaches ever since I've been coming down here because they was giving me headaches too. So when I get a headache, I like to donate it right back to the person that's giving it to me. And it's time for me to go away now and let somebody else donate your headaches. I think you've got enough headaches coming down here without an extra one. No, I keep that coming back. I'm sorry about that. But anyway, if I come down here, I'm going to just sit and be quiet and listen, but I'd rather not come because it's kind of hard for me to come and not comment. I tried to get people to, I'm going to say this real quick and try to, the one thing I want to finish is to try to get people to advertise in that Grand Rapids time. Myers want to advertise in it, Walmart want to advertise in it, and they got all kinds of black participants going there. And I wanted to get that done, but I'm going to leave that for somebody else to do. I'm going to leave, diversity, inclusion is up to y'all now. I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. And Mr. Townsend, you're always welcome here, and you're always welcome to speak.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the commission. It has come to my attention that there is a group of people who wish to move our local elections to the same time we vote in costly, divisive partisan elections. These are the same people who have opposed safer and better parks, safer and better roads, better libraries, better schools, and better police and fire protection, in general, a better city. To conflate partisan elections with nonpartisan elections is a really bad idea. Each of you know how difficult it is to raise money and to inform voters about important local issues. Being buried at the bottom of a ballot in a partisan election won't help that. It has also been suggested that conducting local elections in off-years is voter suppression. This does a disservice to and denigrates the really fine work that many people do in this community to provide access to voting and the process of voting. I have been managing local campaigns of all kinds in Grand Rapids for over 45 years. Not once have I seen any attempt to prevent or discourage voting in any of our local elections. I stand ready with many others in opposition to this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. All right, others who wish to...
Hello, Commissioner Kettle.
Speak about the same subject. He's older than me, so he's done for 45. I've only done it for 40. But I passed out a letter, I gave it to the clerk. Fundamentally, number one, I'm not real clear that the city commission can make a decision on these things. I think it has to be a state legislature issue, but I could be wrong. Second of all, I served on Mayor Hartwell's commission. Some of you may remember that, and when we went back and studied the city clerk's office and the elections and did all that, we came out with a pretty exhaustive report that hit on almost every possible issue, and I think the elections are running really smoothly right now. And to be able to think that we can cram all this stuff into a smaller scope is just not practical, and it's not open and not accessible to a lot of people. Right now, this past election, the ballot was packed, and it took people quite a long time to go through that. And I, that was bad. I think it held up lines, it created a longer process. Now, you decided that it also chased people towards voting early, which is okay, and now we can do that. So, and so the trend is really to going to more openness, more transparency, the ease of voting, and more and more access to everyone, no matter who. That's the trend. That's where we're going. This idea of going backwards and piling on and trying to combine all these things under some idea that it's bad or some voter suppression idea is absolutely not correct. I know that in every election I've ever worked on, whether it was a small turnout or a big one, we did the same amount of effort. And you know that. You vote in off-years, or you get elected in off-years, so you still do the same amount of work. If people don't choose to vote in those kinds of elections, there's nothing we can do about that. They get the literature, they get everything, we're constantly on TV or whatever, talking about it through the media, free media. There's no excuse for people not to vote other than their own perception of their responsibilities to vote. So I don't, so I just don't think we should alter the entire system based on what might be an idea of some people or a perception on their part, but it's just not true. The election system's running fine, democracy's a little bit sloppy, you know, things happen, but overall, we've got a great system, and I'm, again, I'm doing David and many, many others to oppose this idea at whatever, whatever happens to it now or in the future. So please consider our comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kettle. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Ladonna Norman. I'm here to continuously address the housing crisis. I had an opportunity to sit in this very room and hear about the new changes that are happening here. I think it's very inappropriate for the city to have landlords give tenants referrals to any kind of services. It's like mixing business with pleasure. I also think it's inappropriate for the city to mislead the people because I was under the impression that when they got an eviction notice, that they were probably going to get some kind of financial help through the city, and that's not it. You're just going to get a referral to like budgeting classes. And I wanted to welcome Mark Washington here. I haven't had an opportunity to meet you because I haven't came for a couple months, but I want to know that I know of you because your name was brought up several times in here, and it seemed like that those landlords and property management companies were more upset because we're going to put a dent in their pockets because they've been profiting off of late fees and application fees and bedbug fees, whatever you name it. of late fees and application fees and bedbug fees, whatever you name it, they've been profiting off of it. And so I see that it's become the norm for Grand Rapids to invite people from out of town to deal with our messiness, and so they're distracted, and they don't know what's really what, what's what. But what is going on is really not right, and I see no resolution in the future. I think that these laws here that have been made only work for some people and not for everybody, and it's really unfortunate that I lost faith in my city. I lost faith in my city, and I think my city only cares about rich, white people. And I'll speak more about that at another meeting because I'm back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ladonna. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hey, good evening. My name is Leonel Legron. I live south of the Grand Rapids city limit, and I work in Ward Three. I want to talk about the recommendations from the 21st Century Policing Task Force and the subsequent response from the Chief of the Police Department. We have not had an opportunity to view that. I heard snippets of it this morning, but I'm just here today to encourage action on those recommendations. We've had a long time of talking and negotiating and issuing reports and all that type of stuff, and I just would like to see us go ahead and move toward change now. I think we have the data that we need. We know what needs to happen, so my request would be that we, any action that we take from this point forward be actually to implement some of that stuff, put that stuff in place. We don't want to pretend like it already exists or that we are on the way to make it and exist, but actually really implementing it. So I'm just hoping that this body would put their energy toward making sure that those recommendations are actually implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legron. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Frank Roberts, and I'm here to talk to you about the medical marijuana. Thank you for taking your time tonight to come down here. I too, like Mike, that had got up here to talk a little bit about this. However, I wrote a little speech here so I don't get sidetracked because I happen to do that. So I have a couple of properties here in town, 407, 425 Turner. Been in business for 31 years, providing transportation to probably over a million people. We own Dad's Magic Bus and Limousine. We are interested in getting in the transportation, the secured, vetted transportation that is quite an ordeal to get, to get into, especially the expenses of getting into it with an attorney and the application fees and hiring consulting. I know several people that are, that depend on this type of a medicine to survive with the cancer and stuff that they have. We've done transportation for some very large organizations here in Grand Rapids. We've been around for 31 years, like I said, St. Mary's and Grand Valley and Davenport Colleges and Grand, and we're the first limousine service to provide transportation, bring Gordie Howe to Van Andel. So after extensive research on this, I decided to make a move to help with this, with this move in Grand Rapids, and I would like to see it happen. This process with submitting the application to Laura is, is quite extensive, and to secure a law firm that would, to do it and get this passed, and then to find that all the money and time that we put into this isn't, isn't gonna matter because with the changing of the prequalifications, which will continue to be required in order to apply just for the local approval, all my money's kind of wasted. I don't want to see that happen, so I'm appealing to you to see that this recommendation is considerably changed to not restrict my ability and the ability of other local interested parties from competing in a special land use permit. The prequalification process with Laura, like I said, is lengthy, and that my application would be, would not be approved in time for the City of Grand Rapids. My recent communication with Laura indicated that the application submitted today would not be approved until 2019 of July. As medical marijuana was not viable business option for me until recently adopted in my city, I do not have the advantage of starting my prequalification process last year, as many other non-local applicants have done. Those applicants who already established in other cities will have an insurmountable advantage over myself and other local applicants. If you adopt this planning, Commission's recommendation as a property owner, not just a transportation company, but as a, oops, my time's up, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Roberts. But if you have written comments, you want to leave those with us, you're welcome to do that.
Yeah, actually, I emailed them too, so.
Oh, great. Wonderful. Then we'll make sure everyone gets them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, former Commissioner.
I'm De'rielle Williams, and it's a pleasure to be here at a short meeting. I'm here to-
We're not done yet.
I know. I will be. I can go home. I wanted to talk to you about the request before you, and I want to talk about it respectfully, but I want you, the request to change the election cycle for local elections. I hope that you can figure out a way, if you're considering it, to look at the unintended consequences that most might occur. I've been a volunteer primarily on local campaigns, but on, on some state and national campaigns as well, and I know how hard it is to get people to focus on what the issue at hand is. I've, in this cycle, I have driven people to the polls and have asked them if they were familiar with what was on their ballot. They were there to vote for the governor, and that was all they wanted to talk about. They didn't have time to, to study further. I didn't feel I was in a position as a volunteer driver to influence them, but it was very clear to me on more than one occasion that people, and on, in other elections as well, that people get focused on what they're there most for and don't. I think that studies will show that down ballot, the votes fall off, and I think the city elections would get lost in, in larger elections. I think also there is a danger, has already been spoken, that state and federal and local issues get all mixed up in people's minds. And one of the things that has always made me feel best about the City Commission and how the city is run is that it is genuinely nonpartisan. I have supported people that I would not have supported had they been running in an affiliation with a political party, but because of the integrity of this process and no outside influence from political parties, I think that it's, it's a great benefit, and I think that partisan, nonpartisan thing would get all mixed up. I also would like you to consider what the implications of Prop Three are gonna be. People are going to be able to vote absentee. People are gonna be, without any barriers to that. I think we need big education programs on that. I think there are other ways to examine why local turnout may not be as strong as some of us think it should be, including myself. We can look at where polling places are. We can look at easy access. We can look at information. The other thing that occurs to me is that it would become incredibly expensive for people to run in such a large elective field, and that makes me worry that people would not be able to afford to run. So I think local elections should have a local focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Duru. I'm a resident of the Third Ward and Executive Director of LINKUP. I'm here to talk about the policing response that was done earlier today, and want to start with a couple positive comments and just appreciations. One, it was great to see a copy of the comments and the summary from the chief that he was responding to the study, and that that was shared electronically and got out by Communications Department from the Police Department. It was also great that it was a livestreamed presentation, and these are all things that we were not doing a few years ago, and clear demonstrations of progress that we were making as a city to, to make these processes more inclusive and to share information better, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate many of the comments shared by, by Commissioners earlier today expressing a desire to move beyond studies and into action and to request continued implementation of these things, and really appreciate that. Also wanted to just thank the, the chief for kind of agreeing or supporting a recommendation to adopt a year with a 12-year-old age limit within the, the rest and handcuffing process for youth, youth interaction policy, and just the, listening to the community and the responses that were there and, and moving forward that. Further, really appreciate Mark Washington's comments today and his willingness to have a date timeline for implementing that, and December 1st being moving forward as a date where we will start to see those policies implemented, and hope the, your willingness and ability to speak with Bo, talking about the, a commitment to doing a process and providing a timeline for implementation is something that, that happens more and more often with, with these reports and moving forward. It was something that was absent from a lot of the other comments that I saw in looking at this, and again, I appreciate the chief's having written comments for us to, to be able to look at, but, and it recognizes the balance of trying to summarize a lot of information to a small readable report, but I wanted to make a couple comments about what I was able to see and kind of quickly looking through that today. One, again, there is a lack of kind of date time commitments for when these things will be done, and really think it's important that we not only commit to doing these things, but are able to articulate when these will be happening. And recommendation, one, one of this was about conducting a comprehensive staffing and deployment analysis. I don't want to speak to whether this is a good use of city funds or not. I think you are all the ones that have to make the decision on whether, how these things move forward, and it's really up to you what information you need to make those decisions appropriate, but I just want to, if you do move forward with this, I want to draw attention to the fact that 21st Century Policing did identify significant challenges caused by the structure of the Police Department's assignment of officers. In the presentation from the committee at the Goy Center, the person from 21st Century Policing has really said that the way we deploy officers causes racialized outcomes for the City of Grand Rapids, and I, in the comments from, that are written here, it talks about the assessing the amount of officers, and I want to make sure we're not just looking at how do we create a more efficient or larger system on top of what's already there, but also if we're doing an analysis of the structures, that we really understand how what we're doing is causing the outcomes that we're getting and looking into those structural causes in that process. And if we're looking for outside support, that we really focus on that aspect of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard? Mr. Millier coming up?
91 days now, Grand Rapids Rapidudes and Rapidals have been held hostage by the Rapids' new CEO out of some Illinois cornfield. Johnson's only program here is Hot Damn Here I Am. His medical mouth 13, Michigan still makes no stops, the top of Pill Hill, all the way over to the Fire Courthouse at Lyon, but he wouldn't know where either one is, so how do you even talk to him? Now, my, the Hall Hopeman is for a guy that Mayor Bliss keeps putting on, Ann Hartwell, on the Rapid Board. Corner Office, Rosa Parks Circle, goes after, with pitchforks after anyone who suggests that Rosa Parks Circle should be desegregated, bringing it back to veterans route, the Catholic route, and the black routes. This is coming up on, on your agenda. Who gets on the Rapid Board? The, so he led the motion to put, bring Johnson in, and so far, the city is not, not desegregated, working. Where's our worst situation in this country, not just going this century, but going back? Ed Kittle also has, has an office there, and he was Chairman of the Democratic Party. When Ed, Ed worked for Roy Schmidt for a year in Washington, he, he turned away from me when he saw, he knew I wanted, I wanted downtown desegregated, bringing the buses back. The board approves sending you to Washington DC, when for years you've thwarted bringing our buses back. Why send Rosalind Bliss to Washington DC when you guys can't get our buses back as they were until 2004? Every corner of, on, okay, let's report on, we already have a nun basher of 14, Joe Jones' route, and he had a pretty fine event across the street at the last place for his big deal organization, but his bus route don't get better. His Uncle Tom two, Kezu two, Jim Crow four, Eastern, his home, home route, the 14, circles precinct 46. So now up on every corner of Pill Hill, they really messed with the 19, and a few of you know the history, disgraceful history of the 19. Now it's in the nurse basher 19. Every corner of Pill Hill now, is now covered with groups of 10 to 20 truly sullen-looking nurses because by spending $1.8 million to basically capture a city bus route, they had really cool limousine coaches before. You can see them across the street from McDonald's there, about 14 of them, and now you've forced them to go ride city bu, city buses for a brief period.
Thank you, Mr. Millier. Time's up.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
David. All right, others who wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close that opportunity for public comment, and I will turn to my colleagues up here, and I think I'll start down here with Commissioner Park.
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking Joel and his team for a great election day, and particularly for your responsiveness to my requests with Cesar Chavez, with the Latino population, and I want to thank the Latinx advocates who showed up to make sure that things were going well, and thank you for deploying extra resources to there in Buchanan and making sure we had the ballot language in Spanish. When we're talking about increasing voter participation in the 16 and 18, the two lowest turnout precincts in the First Ward, we had, if you compared to 2014, we had 100% increase from those in, in the last four years from the last midterm election, so that's great progress there. I too want to thank City Manager Washington and the chief for their, their effort today and, and the call to action, and look forward to pursuing those timelines and, and being ready for the next budget session to make some decisions. Thanks for everybody for calling, coming out tonight as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor, and I too want to thank the clerk's office and the clerk for staying up all night and getting the job done for us. Now, it's no easy task, and, and there's a lot of anxiety getting ready for it. Thank you too for meeting with the elections groups ahead of time and taking their input, and your promise to do so as a, as a wrap-up. And I also want to thank the voters for all those that turned out. This was a year of some anxiety for people, and, and I think that it showed up at the polls, but that's the way it should be. So I really appreciate that, and as well the comments that were made tonight about the elections process and also about the work that we've been doing in policing. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, representatives from LINK and other places for weighing in on this and for the work that you've done in community to get to the place where we are now.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Just want to thank everyone for coming out on this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Ms. Val.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yep, just would like to quickly thank everyone for coming out and sharing public comment. We appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Before I turn to our City Manager, I will also add my thanks, and I also, seeing a veteran in the House, I just want to say in honor of Veterans Day from this past weekend, we just again want to publicly thank all of our vets in our community, coming from a long line of vets in my own family. I know the sacrifice and dedication and the toll it has, not just on the individual, but their entire family. So thank you to all of our vets, and then also I'll add my thanks to the chief, the department, our City Manager who worked hard to bring forward the presentation today, also all the community members. I see a couple members from our 21st Century Task Force in the House, and I want to thank them. I know they put a lot of time and energy over the last year to work with us to bring those recommendations forward, so thank you. And with that, and I'll thank our clerk too, who stayed up all night, but that's your job, so. Happens a couple times a year.
Anita stood up too.
And Anita did too. Our wonderful city attorney. You did a fine job, fine job. And now to our City Manager. Any final comments as we close the evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am appreciative of community coming here tonight. I do want to acknowledge all of our wonderful staff that has made this evening possible with all the staff work that occurs back of house, so thank you for all the work in making this happen.
All right, City Attorney? City Clerk?
I've said enough for a month.
With that, we're adjourned. Have a wonderful night.